Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. Today is Monday, October 7th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you. Reverend Matthias, can we please take the roll?
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Reverend Matthias is present. Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Shakke.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant.
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion for approval? Support. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? First up, we have a few celebrations this evening. Dr. Gorman.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Mr. Rodney Lewis to come forward. Mr. Lewis will be introducing our new student representatives to our Board of Education. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening. Mrs. Grant, Dr. Gorman, distinguished members of the board. Tonight, I would like to introduce to you two Board of Education student representatives for the district. And this went through a very strong vetting process, and these are the top two candidates that came out of the process. Here I have Lemiria Benson. Ms. Benson is a lifelong Grand Rapids Public School student. She's currently a junior at City High Middle, where she has a 3.5 grade point average. At City, she has exercised her passion for social justice by starting its annual Black History Month Assembly and serving as the Vice President of Black Student Aspiring for Critical Knowledge. Her passion for theology has taken her to the campuses of Duke University and Indiana Wesley University to participate in their respective theology summer programs. Ms. Benson also attended the 2018 Acumenio Advocacy Day for Global Peace for Justice. Her dedication to these interests exemplified in her work as a Bible study teacher for middle and high school students during the summer. Continuously looking to expand her interests and experiences, Ms. Benson plans to major in kinesiology, minor in urban education, and to serve in the National Air Guard. Ms. Benson, you want to raise your hand for us? This is Ms. Benson. Please welcome her to the Board of Education. Ms. Demetius Vellmancho. Ms. Mancho is currently a senior at Innovation Central High School. She excels academically, carrying a 3.92 grade point average while taking dual enrollment courses at Grand Rapids Community College. At the time of graduation, she off earned more than 13 college courses or credits, including course courses in social work, immigration, political science, and medicine. Ms. Vellmancho is a member of the National Honor Society and has continuously received honor roll and Dean's List awards, along with Upward Bound Awards. Ms. Vellmancho has exposed herself to higher education by joining the Trio Upward Bound Program. She is a member of the Girls Empowering Together Club, which is called GIP, and previously served on the Mayor's Youth Council. Currently, Ms. Vellmancho is working with the Kent County Coalition to plan the annual Youth Coalition Summit. So please welcome Ms. Vellmancho. (applause) Both candidates are wonderful candidates. We look forward to having them with you guys the entire school year. They are very committed to this process, so thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Can we also just mention their parents?
Yes.
They've raised awesome kids and...
Ms. Benson's parents are in the back or in the front here. If you guys understand for the audience.[290.13][290.13](applause) And Ms. Mancho is joined by her principal, Mr. Mark Frost.[297.33][297.33](applause)
Thank you. Next, we have...
All right. So next up, Madam President, members of the board, I would like to introduce Mr. Kurt Johnson to come forward. He is missing one person this year. We usually bring Tom the Turkey with us for this presentation, Mr. Johnson.
He has practice.
He has practice, sorry.
He's wore out. He was somewhere earlier.
Mr. Johnson will be talking about the Turkey Trot Kipoff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President, Grant, interim superintendent, Dr. Gorman, and distinguished board members. Guess what time it is?
Turkey time.
Turkey time.
All right.[339.72][339.72](laughing) So you were all supposed to say that in units or three-part harmony.[343.03][343.03](laughing) So next year, three-part harmony. But before we get to Turkey Trot, I just want to give a quick shout-out to Union High School Varsity Soccer, who won back-to-back OK Black Conference Championships. So we will also bring them before you later on, as they are in tournament play right now, so we don't want to break their concentration on that. So we'll bring those dynamic young student athletes to you later on. So with me today, I have a very special guest, with Jessica Eiloff from Blue Care Network, which is, again, our presenting sponsor there. So we're going to talk a little bit about Turkey Trot. And I'm going to take you through a quick slideshow presentation here very quickly and talk about where we're at for this year. So again, our presenting sponsor is returning again. This is six years in a row. Blue Care Network of West Michigan, so we're very proud and very pleased that they are sitting side-by-side with us on this journey and this venture. And we will be moving our feet before we eat again this year. So this is the 27th Annual. Here's a little highlight of the last year. We had the last two years here, where we had about just shy under 4,000 participants, which was a little bit under our 2017 entry, which we're still riding high off our 25th anniversary. But you will notice that our sponsorships have been increased, and even our proceeds have increased, even with the slightly fewer runners there. So we're very pleased about that. Here's a look at some of our sponsors to date here, where we're going with that, and we're still adding to those as well. You might recognize some of those organizations. A little bit about the planning. So we're increasing our participants by focusing in on a lot more engagements there. So we have a lot more involvement with our sponsors. You'll see a lot of promotional things going around with Tom the Turkey. Like I said, he has practice tonight, so he couldn't be here. Our community partners, engaging more of them, more of the running groups that we're interfacing with to join us on board with this as well. And then the social media campaign. You know, everything's online now, so we really have a heavy presence there. We're back to doing our school outreach program, which is getting more students involved in competitions between the school buildings about who can register the most students there. And our digital marketing, again, you know, trying to be smart about how we contact folks and how they prefer to be reached and communicated with. And then some of our traditional methods with hot cards, and we have those at some of our events as well. So our sponsor outreach, we're reactivating some of the people who are sponsors who were with us last year and adding to those new ones for this year. And then we're also, like I said, you know, everybody's not always a runner, but we have a mechanism whereby people can donate to the event if they're not going to participate. So here's a look at the lineup of some of the sponsors that you saw their logos on the other page, and we're still counting because they're still being added there. So increasing our engagement. Again, engagement really is talked about making people feel connected to the event. And so we do that by just kind of just standing in front of everybody, constantly in their face, and just kind of beating them over the head with Tom the Turkey and Turkey Trot. And so we're getting a lot of value and benefit and yielding a lot of mileage out of that, so we're going to continue to do that and continue to have a bigger online presence there. You see our hashtag GRTurkeyTrot, if you use that. If you guys are social media savvy, you can do that as well. We try to capitalize on any event that's going on in the area so we can promote the Turkey Trot. Again, a social media exposure there, some of the things that you'll find online if you are social media savvy and you're online as well, you'll see us and our presence there. Our traditional media, radio, television there. We even had Javier join our team this year with El Vasero and took Tom the Turkey with him there. Also, you'll see Tom and Tina. We have two turkeys this year, so you see Tom and Tina making their rounds as well. So they might stop by an office near you. We asked you to take a photo op with them if they do stop by, and then we'll post you as well. So again, promoting at our athletic events, SAF events, school performances. So one of our plays, Tom the Turkey showed up and, you know, kind of photobomb the ending there. And then some of the BCN events, and we're always in the Santa Parade regardless of the weather.[610.00][610.00](laughing) Regardless of the weather, we're always there, and we have a great time there. This year, we'll have three packet pickups there. So we traditionally do it at BCN Corporate Offices in Cascade and then at Union High School. But we are trying to be more receptive to some of the feedback, and we have added, through the gracious participation of Blue Care Network, we're going to add a pickup packet at the Steckety's Building downtown. So that'll be convenient for those who are in the downtown area who won't have to travel out far to pick up their registration things. So again, we will be around town promoting the event as it kicked off. We have well over 500 registrants already. People registered for that. And so the way to register for it is to go to GRPS.org and then click on the Athletic tab, and the Turkey Trot banner will pop up, and it will guide you through the registration process where you can register or donate if you can't be with us. So we're looking forward to a dynamic time. So at this time, I'm going to have Jessica Eiloff say a few words.
Hi, everybody. So great to be back here again, sixth year in a row. Everybody at Blue Care Network and at Blue Cross are so excited about this event again. In fact, Tom was at both the Blue Cross building and Steckety's there, as well as BCN today, so he's probably a little tired. And all of our employees are big on promoting this and participating in it, volunteering at it. We're just really excited to once again invite families in the community to come out and use their feet for these healthy initiatives out in the community and support our students that want to be able to play these sports, you know, as athletes and maybe not be able to afford to play. So we love to participate and support that programming.
Questions? All right. We're going to go big or go home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, you guys.
So I'm sending an email out soon to everyone, so I'll meet you guys there on Thanksgiving morning.[730.11][730.11](laughing) Okay. Next, we have reports from our student representatives. Are they prepared for reports today?
Probably not prepared this evening, but next meeting, they'll be prepared.
Okay. That's fine. I was going to say, you guys are really good. Next, we have our secretary's report.
We have some board committee scheduled. The Ad hoc Policy Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, October 16th, at 5:30 PM in room 101 of our Grand Rapids Public School Administration Building. Also, volunteers are needed. The Athletics will be hosting the inaugural Michigan High School Athletic Association West Michigan Middle School Cross Country Championship at GRPS University on Saturday, October 19th. It's a couple weeks away. Beginning at 12 o'clock, over 1,000 runners are expected with 2,000 spectators for this event. Prior to that event, GRPS Athletics will host a 7th Annual Elementary Cross Country Invitational, where over 600 runners are expected. Volunteers are needed to make these events a success. If you're interested in volunteering, please contact Juliana Lucas via lucassj@grps.org for additional information, and that's probably going to be also on our website, I suspect. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have public comment for board agenda items?
We do not.
Next, we have committee chair updates. First, we will start with the Academic Achievement Committee. Ms. Davis?
Yeah, so we met on Thursday, this past Thursday, and first, we heard from the Instructional Council. It was a very brief update, as they just had their first meeting of the school year. They have new members, so we got a list of their new members, and we will be hearing from them at every Academic Achievement Committee meeting. We also heard from Bernard Colton and Amarena Nelson from Alger Middle School. They gave us some information regarding the status of the Comprehensive Support and Improvement School rating that Michigan Department of Education has given Alger Middle. That was given on data from the 2016-17 school year, and they are working on attendance, behavior, and course data. By 2021, the attendance has to be about 90% or greater. They have to reduce suspension rates by 30%, and the number of students proficient on M-step has to increase by 9%. So basically, they were just really excited about how the school year has begun. They have a great team of teachers that is working towards this goal, and it sounds like they're off to a good start. And then we also heard about some of the academies at Ottawa. The two that we were given extensive packets on based on the new theme school application process that I believe we are still going to approve as a full board, but we helped to create that process or that packet of information that we're asking of each academy. And the two that are going to be proposed for 2020-2021 school year are Academy of Public Safety Services and Academy of Media Production. So those of us on that committee were given packets on each of those. We're going to read through those and then bring those to the full board with our comments or questions. And then they just went over a little bit of updates on the academy that has just begun this year, which is the hospitality and tourism. So that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. A point of clarification, the full board will be talking through the process for theme schools and making a full board approval, as well as doing a review of the individual academy. So that committee has been receiving information and working through it, but nothing has been approved. It will all come to full board for both of those pieces. Next, Mr. Ross, do you have a finance committee update?
Well, yeah, I can offer a little bit. Our last meeting on the 23rd, unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum, just last-minute pieces. Ms. Shakke was excused, so not on you, obviously. But we did have some last-minute adjustments, so we didn't meet. But the good news, though, there was really nothing substantive planned for the finance committee that was supposed to be held on the 23rd. All the information that was going to be discussed that day is in your packet under the purchasing agenda. That's largely, and then a few donations. Most of the stuff on the purchasing agenda, the large-ticket items were regarding the safety grant and some expenditures as far as security updates that is going on throughout the district. Those are probably the bulk of the purchasing agenda dollars, but nothing really substantive, unless Mr. Oberst, am I missing anything? Is there anything you'd like to come down and be in the spotlight and share something? No? No pressure?
I'd like to stop down when we get to that point.
Okay, well, he's happy to stop down when we get to that point.[1063.13][1063.13](laughing) But no, like I said, so we didn't meet, but again, there was nothing outside of the ordinary that we really needed to discuss as a committee. Everything that was going to be brought forth is right there in the purchasing agenda anyway.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I believe we also have a quick update for Ms. Lewis for the Policy Committee.
Yes, well, Reverend Matthias just mentioned that we will be meeting this month finally, after all of the problems we've had with getting a quorum, but we'll be meeting the 16th of October in room 101 at 5:30.
Okay.
19th of October.
Pardon?
19th.
19th. Good. Thank you, John.
Okay. Next, we have a conference attendance report out. So last week, a few of our board members were able to attend the CUBE Conference, which is the Council of Urban Boards of Education. And I was one of the members who was able to attend, was really excited to spend some time with our new board members and learn a lot of really great information, and to talk to other districts around the country and find out how those boards and those superintendents are doing their work. So if we want to take a moment to provide a quick update, Ms. Williams, let's start with you.
Well, I want to thank the district for allowing me to represent on behalf of the board, along with colleagues, including President Grant in Miami, at the Council of Urban Boards in Education. I'd like to share several observations or ideas that I learned at the conference. First, while attending Superintendent's Search Conference Workshop on Best Practices for Getting the Right Superintendent, I learned that our district is doing a good job with our process for community engagement and that we are in the best practices that the National School Board Association would have us use with regards to an equity lens model. So we are kind of right on trend in that regard, which is an awesome thing. There were quite a few other districts represented that were not taking the steps that we have taken to engage their community in their superintendent searches. I also received information with regards to performance expectations and how we could build that into a new superintendent's contract and also maybe include some pay incentives if those expectations are met. So those were some really good ideas for us to look at as we go forward with regards to the superintendent search. There were also several workshops with regards to ideas around recruiting and retaining teachers of color, particularly male teachers of color. So as we met over dinners, we were excited about a lot of the ideas that came forward at this conference, and we are excited to roll up our sleeves and see how we can work together to try to implement some things in the district. Lastly, I was really impressed with the authors and keynote speakers, Dr. Monique Morris and Christian Moore, who both focused on the discrepancies in discipline with regards to students of color and their Caucasian counterparts. The discrepancies are higher for those students of color, and so there were some great strategies that we could try to implement and look at to see how we can build a model that is resilient for our students. So I am excited to have been a part of this conference and to be able to attend and learn more. And then lastly, we were given an opportunity to have some gift cards to bring back to several teachers to kind of support things that they're doing in their classroom by donorchoose.org. And I was able to make a donation to a teacher, Mr. Ryan Davis at Alger Middle School, to be able to help support him, and so he'll get $200 worth of gift cards from that as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Davis?
All right. I agree. I just feel very privileged to have had the opportunity to attend this conference. I felt very affirmed with some of the work that we've been doing in Grand Rapids Public Schools and also just really fired up to bring some information back to our district. I went to a number of sessions. The first one I attended was Creating Trauma-Sensitive and Cultural Competent Schools, and this was run by an author, Melissa Saden, who has written a number of books, and I purchased all of her books as well, because I thought she was great. She talked about the invisible backpack that we all carry with us, that carries our beliefs, culture, values, and experiences, and influences how we interact with others. She spoke of ACEs, which are adverse childhood experiences, and just the data surrounding that, which I've done some education in that prior to this, but 64% of us carry at least one adverse childhood experience, and just how that affects how we learn and scientifically how our brains develop. So that was very interesting, and just taking that into the classroom and how important that is to carry that knowledge and to educate our students as far as that goes. I went to another one on addressing the equity value gap, and so this was asking the question, are we doing what we say we do in regards to equity? And just presented us with a bunch of tough questions to ask ourselves as we look at different policy in all of our work, and talking about, do we have a definition of equity that's well-known? Do we have a line item in our budget for equity work? Reminding us to have an equity lens when looking at opportunity gaps and access gaps. So we might provide opportunities that are equitable, but people might not have access to those opportunities. And to always ask the question, who's not at the table? So in meetings that we attend or different things that are offered throughout the district, who's not in attendance? I also was just in awe of all the speakers that we got to see and made some notes, especially on Monique Morris, who spoke specifically of the racial disparity among girls, which is not often highlighted. We focus mostly on the discrepancy among boys, but she is a real advocate for that discrepancy in girls as well. And I went to a session, One Goal, One Focus, which was Garland, Texas ISD, and they spoke of how they came up with their one goal for their district. They say it's one goal with four commas, so it just, they spoke to how that has guided their work, to just have that clear goal that runs all of their decision-making. And we came away with a lot of wonderful ideas from that session as well. And the last session I want to highlight was one I attended called Legislating for Immigrants and Their Families. And this one was a wonderful, almost like a work session. We were given lots of policy, and we were asked to look at the policy through an equity lens. And then, as a group, we discussed different things in the policies that needed to be addressed to make them more equitable. And we also looked at some resolutions that different districts around the country have implemented regarding this. So some different resolutions that I made note of were a resolution in support of immigrants, a safe and welcoming school district resolution, a bilingual resolution where you make sure you provide services and materials at all events, a language access policy, a resolution to urge government to reunite immigrant families. And then I also pulled away, there was a district that had an immigration advisory group, and they designated an employee at each building to be a part of this group. And then just reinforcing that it's a wonderful idea to highlight schools that celebrate and emphasize cultural education, so to really celebrate those buildings that are emphasizing that. So I'm just very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shakke?
Yes. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to represent Grand Rapids Public Schools at this conference and also for the opportunity to learn. That is how we are better formed as school board members and can make better decisions. This is the second time I had the opportunity to attend CUBE, and of all the National School Board Association conferences, it is the one that impacts me most. As with the first time, it challenges me and inspires me to be bold, and I'm really excited to bring back the energy, I think, that we all felt there to the district. It's also a reminder that as a school board member, every decision we make, from the board table to the classroom, is impacting the lives of humans and reminds me how humbled I am to be able to serve and do this work. Well, if there were two words to describe the themes of my learning, they were data and policy. And these are the two places where we, as school board members, can really look at the data to find our blind spots in the places in which we can truly impact our students and also the places that we can celebrate and replicate. And so many of the sessions we're on, really looking at data as a school board member and helping us understand the complexity of the incredible work that all of you do in our district. And then policy, because policy is really where we can do as school board members. And so what do equitable policies look like? How do we set our district up for the success of all students? And so those were the two themes for my learning. One of the most impactful sessions that I attended was on cultural responsiveness, and it was presented by a school district in Illinois, the Dalton Riverdale School District, and they had a dynamic and inspirational Assistant Superintendent, so much so that her school board president came up and said she's not available for hire.[1732.13][1732.13](laughing) So noted. But they really focused on this policy piece. Policy created at both the state level in Illinois and also at the school board level to direct cultural responsiveness and then also social and emotional development. I wanted to read for you what the state of Illinois has done around professional development. They said, "Now, the state of Illinois requires the in-service training to include," this is in-service training for educators, "training to develop cultural competency rather than training on civil rights and in-cultural diversity, including understanding and reducing implicit racial bias rather than including racial and ethnic sensitivity and implicit racial bias." I thought that was really bold by the state of Illinois, and I was proud that they were making these changes in what is required in professional development for teachers. So this dynamic speaker, this Assistant Superintendent challenged us to develop a toolkit specifically for staff as they evaluate curriculum, to have culturally responsive curriculum. And in her words, she said... And in her words, she said, does your math curriculum make students of color believe they can be mathematicians? No? Well, then we're not interested. And so how can we be bold to those providers of curriculum to let them know that we have a standard for our students, a standard that all children can believe they can be all things? So it was really impactful for me. As with all conferences, it's really hard to know where to begin. It can be very overwhelming, but above all else, we have to begin somewhere. And I think the four of us are really ready and inspired to begin somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And I won't add much to that. You guys did a really good job of review. One thing I will say is that I'm excited for our board retreat. One of the sessions that I was able to attend really talked about how is the board creating goals that are supported by data and that are uplifting the work of the district? And really, the board being a partner to the district, not using data as a way to trap our administrators or our teachers, but to really support their work and help them. And there was an example of this board who created their own mission and goals, which was directly linked to the goals and mission of the district. And what they did was a deep dive together about the data and the buildings that needed the most support. Like they took that support and made specific goals for that building. And then the board's work was to just say, how can we support this in happening? So if we're bringing in partners for the district, as an example, we won't bring in a partner for basketball jerseys if that's not what is going to make the biggest impact. Let's start informing our partners about the support that we need and the goals that we're trying to meet in very specific ways through data. So one example of that is they had a partner who was willing to fund, they were really focused on SAT scores. And they wanted their best teachers to be those teachers that came in on Saturdays to help students study for those SATs and prep for those SATs. So they had a partner who said, we will incentivize your staff to come in, but it won't just be for that top tier of students. This was the caveat. It had to be students at all parts of the spectrum who may struggle, whose GPA may be much lower. It couldn't just be the gifted and talented students. And the teachers who were able to help them reach their goals and reach their goal for their SAT score were incentivized. I believe it was like a $2,000 incentive or a $3,000 incentive, but a partner picked up that tab. So it was, let's define what our goals are, let's define the buildings that has these goals, and let's bring in a partner that will help support that work. So that's a big conversation, but I'm excited to look at things from that lens. And during our work session, I'm excited to talk about what are our board goals and our mission. So I think you guys have heard enough about our conference experience. Next, we have our superintendent's report.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Mr. Melvin Hatkins to come forward. He is going to describe the new theme school application process. He is joined by Ms. Natasha Neal.
Good evening. Dr. Gorman, President Grant, and board members. I would like to introduce Natasha Neal. She is our Director of Community and Student Affairs. And she's excited to be here today to talk about our new theme school process that just launched October 1st.
Good evening, President Grant, Dr. Gorman, and other board members. So we've been working to make and ensure that our theme school process improved, that we provided better customer service to our parents, that we improved the internal process as well. And so in doing that, we did a lot of research over the summer, and we've made some changes to our theme school process in the application. One of the big changes is that we shortened the window. Previously, our window was October 1st to January 31st. That was a little over a three-month window, and that was the longest theme school selection window in the city. But also, when we did research of other urban districts, we were one of the largest theme school windows. And so we shortened it from, so now it's eight weeks from October 1st to November 29th. This will allow us to notify parents much earlier. It will allow us to get our letters out. I think this will be the earliest before our private schools, our charter schools who are around us. And so our parents will know much earlier where their students are going. We've also worked on a webpage. We've always had apply.grps.org, but we sort of beefed it up. And so now it contains information about every school. It contains information about theme school transportation, athletics at theme schools. And for the first time, we've published the projected number of seats in each grade at each theme school. And so this is just our attempt to be as transparent as possible with parents and with the community. We met with principals and EDs and ensured that they were okay with our numbers because we didn't want it to be a disparate process where central office was doing one thing and the buildings were saying something else. And so we've just tried to be very collaborative in our new process. Additionally, we've changed our application, our online application. It's much more simple now. So far, we've had 301 applications submitted. The median time to submit an application is under five minutes, and 40% of the applications that have been submitted are from a mobile device because it's that simple. The other, one of the other things that we've changed is constant communication. We talked to parents and we heard parents that they applied in October, and it was sort of silent until the spring. So we've put checkpoints in place wherein we will continually communicate with parents to let them know we got their application, we processed it. This is the slot, this is the waitlist. We also plan to publish the waitlist on the website after we make selections. This is just in our effort to make the process much better.
May I ask? So are we going to do a little bit more as far as first come, first served? Or after the time period's up, you just draw the names and that's how they get in?
Not quite. And so once we close our window in November, we've given ourselves a two-week period to make decisions. And that includes bringing in the Office of Special Ed to make sure that our students with IEPs are accommodated for. But it also includes us bringing in the Office of Early Childhood to make sure that our pre-K students are where they're supposed to be. But once we do that, we have priority placements that we've always had, which are neighborhood students, siblings of students who currently attend the school they're applying to. So these students get like priority points, and then we lottery for the other vacant seats.
But it doesn't matter when somebody's applied, they're all in there together?
Yep. You could apply October 1st or before, on October 28th.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about the process?
Thank you very much. We know that was, that was hard work, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Madam President, members of the board, I would like to have John Helmholt come forward to give us a count day update.
Superintendent Gorman, President Grant, members of the board. It's exciting to be here because we had a really good count day. As we shared last week, your budget that you approved back in June was expecting a 214 student decline. And that's still, believe it or not, one of the lowest declines over the last two decades. And on average, we were upwards of 400 to 600. One year, we're as much as 1,100 student decline all at once. And so since the Transformation Plan, we have stabilized enrollment. We had that one year where we actually increased enrollment for the first time. We're looking at the numbers we've got to go through. Really, it's a 45-day process for us to look at. But right now, we are confident that we're not only going to beat these projections, but there is actually a possibility we could see a small increase for the second time in two decades. And so we just want to give a shout out to all of our students, the parents, the teachers, support staff, principals. We had a number of schools that had near-perfect attendance. And so I think our message is, while we're certainly highlighting count day, our message has really been around attendance and supporting the attendance challenge and ensuring that students are in school on time every day, ready to learn. It just so happens that on two days of the year, our entire state funding is based on that, with 90% of the funding based on this most recent count day, 10% in February. So good news. Let's keep our fingers crossed. We have 10 days to count the unexcused, we have 30 days to count the excused, and then there's an additional window there for other students that are in other categories. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have action items. The board is going to ask to speak to Mrs. Laura Lemoore for the Parent Advisors for Special Education. Please.
Good evening, President Grant, Superintendent Gorman, esteemed members of the board. We are asking for your approval for two parents to represent Grand Rapids Public Schools on the Parent Advisory Committee for Special Education. A little bit of background on that is that in the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education, it requires that an intermediate school district, in our case KISD, convene a meeting of parents for the purpose of advising them about the countywide programming that occurs for the geography that they're in service to. The way that Kent fulfills that obligation is they reach out to each of the 20 local districts as well as their public school academies, and they ask for representation from each of the local districts. And then those are weighted based on the numbers of students that you serve. Our colleagues in Wyoming, for example, they have three representatives. Grand Rapids Public Schools, we're asked to represent with four. Historically, we've had five representatives, but this is my sixth start with the district, and those seats have been pretty continuously filled with members who are parents from our center programs. And instead of unseating somebody who was there historically, when their terms came up, they would say, yes, I want to re-up. So we just said, okay, okay, okay. And so now it's a new day. We have the opportunity to fill the four vacant seats with four parents from our local district, and we're excited to do that. We've reached out to building principals and to special ed supervisors. We asked them for recommendations on two different levels. We want those that are going to be conscientious critics of us, and we want those that are going to be community advocates. And so this first ask is for two parents who were recommended by both principals and supervisors, who they've had interactions with over the last couple of years. And both of the parents we approached at the first time said yes. What I'd like to do for the next two is engage those two parents who have said yes and have them work with us and our principals and supervisors again to do and fill the other two seats. Tonight is the first meeting of the KISD PACE, the Parent Advisory for Special Education. And both of our members are there with one of our special ed supervisors to get them introduced and familiar with how that operates so that they can find their voice for both themselves and the district. The next meeting is scheduled for December. There are five meetings a year. And we'll be coming to you hopefully in late November or the first meeting in December to ask you for your support and approval of the next two members. Again, we'd like to engage the currently seated PACE members, the principals, the supervisors, in getting those next two names for us. And then have a quick meeting to bring them up to speed so that they can walk in to the December meeting as a fantastic foursome for our district. Any questions?
And who are the two parents, if you may ask?
Yes, you may. Denise Barton, she has a son attending Union High School. And Ashley Adams, she has a daughter attending Kent Hills.
Wonderful.
So right now, we have our bookends. We have a secondary and an elementary. And we'll be looking to fill in the gaps with our two additional family members.
Awesome.
And if I could possibly urge you to, as Kim Davis said earlier, maybe look at who's not at that table when you look at those other two seats to be inclusive?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't know if this, we're voting on this, those names don't match what's here. Am I missing?
They're further down. See, I'm there.
I just see recommended action, most to accept parent advocates for special ed, and they're two separate names. So that's in the language as far as the recommended action though. No, that's fine, but I'm just saying as far as officially the recommended action doesn't jive with what you're trying to get me to see now, so.
Not quite sure. Okay. And if I could add, I forgot, my apologies. The first step is for you to take the names and take action on them tonight. Then we take them, when I say we, Julie Anderson takes them to and provides them to the Kent ISD Board. And the Kent ISD Board then approves them at their next meeting as well. So it's a two-step process for all families.
Okay. So we will make that update to the, to the paperwork for the official paperwork. But do I have a motion to approve the parent, the nominees for parent advisors for special education?
Motion for approval.
Support.
Second, support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you.
Next, we have the purchasing agenda. Are there any items for discussion or any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have the, a donation from the Grand Rapids Student Advancement Foundation for GRPS. Are there any discussion items or comments for that? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Or Matias?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
There's a donation from Blue Cross of Blue Shield of Michigan to Burton Elementary. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have a donation from the Peter C. and Imogen Cook Foundation to Caesar Y. Chavez. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
There's a donation from the Doug and Maria DeVos Foundation to Community and Student Affairs. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
We have a donation from the Doug Meyer Foundation to Shawmet Hills in Aberdeen. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Matias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatky?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Lastly, we have a donation from Tribe Church of Rockford to Westwood Middle. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping?
So moved.
Support.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Or Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker is excused. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, we have one discussion item this evening for our superintendent search. We have an update. So we met on September 17th, and we were able to interview three national search firms, and we, as a board, made a decision to go with Ray and Associates. Our first full board planning meeting with them will be on October 22nd. In the meantime, they will be having individual conversations with each board member. I believe we are all scheduled at this point, so everyone has scheduled their call. We will have an individual conversation, and that will just be to get an individual view of what each board member feels like this next superintendent should have as far as qualities and the focus and the goal for this next leader. And they will also be doing a little bit of market research, salary and other items like that, and then we will meet on the 22nd to finish further planning. Do we have public comment for non-agenda items? We do.
Yes, we do.
How about you, you want to do the first thing?
Yep. So Brenda Breams, and is it Josie Anderson? And Anne Swisher? If you may come up.
If we can have all three of you join us, and we'll kind of call three at a
Thank you. If you can just state your name, and you'll each have three minutes to comment. Should we work the mics? I just handed it to you.
Yep.
My name is Tony Jacobs.
And so just to clarify, as a board, we do not comment back to those who are in front of us, and so you're welcome to speak?
Yeah, understood. Three minutes, all right. Thank you, Superintendent Gorman. Thank you, President Grant, and thank you all board members for allowing us to speak. First, I want to acknowledge the two students to my right, you're both inspirational, so I know you'll have lots of success, so thank you for sharing your stories. My daughter attends Grand Rapids Montessori High School. I speak on behalf of Grand Rapids for Education Justice, or GREJ. Included in our group are educators and parents of our community. GREJ is against the two-tier education system that exists with Grand Rapids Public Schools, where students from poor families and students of color disproportionately do not have access to the resources necessary for a proper education, in addition to having second-tier facilities. GREJ also objects to the rise of the corporate education model, which has led to the privatization of services at GRPS, such as busing services, custodial services, and curriculum, which all have separate boards of oversight outside of GRPS. GREJ wants to see our teachers be fully respected and with a full, fair salary, access to their necessary resources, with appropriate classroom sizes, and minimal use of substitute teachers as long-term surrogate teachers. GREJ wants our students, parents, and other members of our great diverse community to be enabled to have a larger interactive role in the future of public education. GREJ opposes the significant influence of the business interests on the school curriculum, business interests who even have their own advisory council in our district. We oppose the charter-school-like entities that exist within the GRPS system. We see as a threat the furthering of the corporate model that is being pushed across the country by Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos. I end my comment by asking people to join us on Facebook at Grand Rapids for Education Justice. Also, we can be reached by email at informedteachers@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Anderson, and I'm a retired teacher at Grand Rapids Public Schools and other districts. I say good morning or good afternoon to Mrs. Grant, to Dr. Gorman, and to the board members, and to our student representatives who are our future. Today, education is perhaps the most important function of state and local governments. Compulsory school attendance laws and the great expenditures for education both demonstrate our recognition of the importance of education to our democratic society. It is required in the performance of our most basic public responsibilities, even in service in the armed forces. It is the very foundation of good citizenship. Today, it is a principal instrument in awakening the child to cultural values, in preparing him for later professional training, and in helping him to adjust normally to his environment. In these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if he is denied the opportunity to an education. Such an opportunity where the state has undertaken to provide it is a right which must be made available to all on equal terms. The case is Brown versus Board of Education. The words are those of Chief Justice Earl Warren. The time is 1954. Today, a substantial disparity exists within Grand Rapids Public Schools for educational performance and opportunity. The numbers tell the story. According to GreatSchools.com, an award-winning national school evaluation service, 5% of Ottawa Hills high school graduates are academically capable and ready to attend college, while across town at City Middle and High School, 90% of the graduates are college-ready. 55% of the students at City are white, and 80% of their families are affluent. 95% of the students at Ottawa are minorities and come from homes that qualify as low-income. The average SAT score at City High is a 1230 out of 1,600, while at Ottawa, the average score is 838 out of 1,600. Only 5% of students at Ottawa qualify proficient in science, 7% are proficient in social studies, with less than 15% participating in advanced placement classes. According to GreatSchools.com, disadvantaged students are falling behind others across the state. These young people will be competing or not competing against each other for jobs in the very near future, which currently has a Burger King ceiling for those with anemic academic results. At Union High School, the average SAT score is 881 out of 1,600, with single-digit proficiency in science and less than 10% college readiness. Union has over 75% minority population. GreatSchools.com has the same warning, that Union's disadvantaged students are falling far behind other students in the state with large achievement gaps. Innovation Central High has an SAT average of 872 out of 1,600, with 7% college readiness at graduation. Parents are warned that this school is also below the state average in key measures of college and career readiness. Most ironically, it is the academic reality at University Prep, another failing Grand Rapids Public School stool, where only 5% have achieved college and SAT academic requirements necessary for college attendance, while 6% are proficient in math and science.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anne Swisher, and I just appreciate you two young ladies being here. I really love that. I worked in the district for 18 years in special education. It was a very different district than it is now. Over the years, many people have come to this table, brought their issues with teachers or administrators, IEP issues, bullying, lack of books, cold and hot buildings, issues with asbestos, classroom doors glued shut, unappealing lunches, valedictorians who had to make remedial classes in college. There were too many substitute teachers. There have been a lot of issues brought to this board, and this is another one. MSU professor David Arsene wrote in 2017, "Over the last 15 years, the average district's per pupil funding has declined 25% after adjusting for inflation, and funding for high-needs kids has seriously eroded. This nation and this state no longer have a priority for funding public education." This district chooses the money allocated for students. This district also relies heavily on philanthropic gifts. The transformation plan was a code word for choice. Families bid into these programs, students from other districts too. There was private money to make up for the loss of student funding to support these choice programs. School of Choice permitted parents to segregate their child from their neighborhood schools with public funding. City High has 149 School of Choice students. CA Frost High has 13, Union 11, Innovation Central 5, University Prep 5, Ottawa 2. There are themed schools too, the Museum School, Economicology, Frost, and nine others. The applicants take a test, perhaps write an essay, interview parent and student, and then a computer selects the student body. There are 451 students in these special programs, but GRPS has thousands of other students. In the 2016-17 school year, 797 students were homeless. This was a 26% increase from the previous year. The McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act states, "Each child of a homeless individual and each homeless youth has equal access to the same free, appropriate public education." The district report states, "Poverty in combination with illness, disabilities, disaster, violence, crime, war, and extreme family conflict drive homelessness." There are a lot of families here who don't have the resources to apply for the choice programs. Are their buildings funded and supported as well as the choice buildings? The BOE has to take the reins and get back to educating all the students in the district equitably. Grand Rapids is a public school funded by taxpayers. We have to put public back in public schools.
Thank you.
So Ms. Briens, Brenda Briens, and Jack Prince, as well as Rich Fink? Just to reiterate, if you can state your name, please, and you'll each have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Brenda Briens. I'm the parent of a student who recently graduated from Union High School. One of the reasons I'm speaking out is after 10 to 13 years of being a parent at Grand Rapids Public, I still have concerns about the lack of transparency and communication with parents and families, especially in schools that are not considered themed schools. My son went to high school at Union. His teachers were fabulous. In fact, I can't say enough good about them. But there was no opportunity for parents to get involved in the school. Perhaps it was because it was a high school, but there's little communication about basic things like conferences or school athletic events. In the four years my son attended Union, I never got one single note from the district. There was no focus groups for parents to combat some of the issues that happened at the high school level. In four years, there was never even a yearbook for the students. Even when the community offered to help, that help was declined. The textbooks my son used were the same books his father used at Union in 1994. Yet I'm watching brand-new themed schools pop up in beautiful new buildings around the city, and I'm wondering how we justify that. These schools are beautiful, but they don't teach our kids. Why are themed schools continuing to grow when our kids are using outdated textbooks, poor heating and cooling in the schools, outdated computers and technology, and things like asbestos photos floating around on the internet? It's very disappointing, and I'm wondering why parents aren't encouraged to get involved, ask questions, help to raise funds. Why is the community turned away? Why do I have to depend on Facebook pages for information to keep me updated on events, athletics, and news? I found out the school, Union, had no heat by a newspaper article. There was never a robocall, no note, no email for parents. Stuff happens, we get it. But transparency and communication would put rumors to rest. There were a number of stories about the heat, depending on who you spoke to. It seems the district would make parents aware so stories don't get out of control. And then it came to my attention this past summer that there was an asbestos issue at Union. Two weeks before school started, a few pictures were circulating of a hallway blocked off with signs that read, "Caution: Asbestos." Soon after, the area was blocked off, and blowers were installed. Am I allowed to go on? Is my time up?
Yep, it's up.
Okay.
You can finish real quick.
Okay. There were blowers installed, and I'm wondering why these issues weren't addressed. Parents deserve the right to ask questions about their children's safety and the safety of the staff.
Thank you.
My name is Jack Prince. We are sitting in the boardroom of a truly exceptional school. That's why we're here, for exceptional means of school like no other. There is no other school system in West Michigan that has a more egregious two-tier system. We're also here because two-tier schools like to work in the dark, and we plan on shedding some light. No other district has the exceptional disparity academically between its high schools, with one building having over 90% of its graduates ready and capable for college, with another two high schools having only 5%. That is truly unique to other state districts. No other school could close a decade-long school called Vanderburgh and hand it to a charter school company, losing hundreds of students and then complain about declining enrollment. No other school could close an award-winning school for pregnant mothers and replace it with a business-sponsored shiny museum school with an academic screening process catering to a large number of out-of-district students. That was so exceptional, the city dignitaries were pictured with floating balloons at the ribbon-cutting. Meanwhile, however, at Ottawa High School, students are leaving, according to a contemporary MLive edition. Why would any student leave this exceptional district, this mecca of school choice? Well, maybe besides the cold rooms at the lower-tier schools, and the anemic academic production, and the chaotic callways, including shootings, it's because of the higher number of full-time subs that man classrooms in two-tier buildings. Westwood Middle School, two years ago, had 30% of its classrooms filled by full-time subs on opening day. City and the museum school had none. Exceptionally, when City or the museum school do have teacher vacancies, they are filled 98% of the time, while the lower-tier schools see only 70% of their classrooms filled, according to an FOIA search of the last three years. Possibly most unique, however, and exceptional, is the pay disparity here. Exceptionally, GRPS has the most administrators per student, and they pay the most of any school in Kent County, while paying her teachers the least. We would suggest you take 5% of your dozens of 100K-paid administrators and raise the subpay. We won't charge you for that advice, like Cambridge did. Two-tier schools are cruel, excuse me. GRPS has an exceptional history with Betsy DeVos and her anti-public-school relatives, which gave over $10 million to this school, which nicely covered the loss of state revenue, and instilled a business-pension ideological environment in exchange. This pension included privatizing the substitutes and the bus drivers, and inculcating charter school aspects across this district. We've already mentioned the subproblem as a result, and you can also add the discontentment of hundreds of parents who right now display their total disgust with the privatized busing system in this district daily on a webpage with over 500 members. Two-tier schools are cruel to disadvantaged students. Michigan schools are among the most segregated, according to the Detroit News in the United States, and GRPS suffers from a double segregation, with students sequestered by race, income, and opportunity.
Your time is up.
You're missing the best part.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Fink, and I'm a retired school teacher.
My name is Rich Fink, and I'm a retired school teacher. This group of educators that you've just heard are retired educators, parents, students, and have come today to present what we feel has become a two-tiered educational system in Grand Rapids. We've not come to place blame, but rather have come to ask what you, as a board, are going to do to create an equal playing field for all Grand Rapids students. Our group has foiaed considerable data and information from the district in order for us to further evaluate and disseminate information to the public at large as we see evidence of a two-tiered system. Our research indicates that this term may have originated from a study conducted by the National Commission on Teaching in America's Future, May 13, 2004. The study was titled, "50 Years After Brown Versus Board of Education: A Two-Tierred Education System." The study found that low-income students, students of color, were too often concentrated in separate and unequal schools. It found that holding students accountable for high academic standards is unacceptable when a district is unwilling to provide adequate resources, technology, educators, support staff, and facilities. As you've listened to the colleagues who have spoken before me, we have found through our research that this seems to be the case in Grand Rapids schools. Through the information provided by the district, we have found inequitable funding, disparity in quality and maintenance of facilities, substantial differences in class sizes, and a dramatic difference in the staffing of these buildings, to name a few. What we have found is that Tier 1 schools are comprised of magnet, charter, and choice schools, requiring application with academic and behavioral standards, while the tier 2 schools are traditional public schools that struggle to meet state and district standards. The tier 2 schools are those schools that are required to accept and educate every student. Based on our findings, it appears that those students in the tier 1 schools receive a superior education to the students in tier 2 schools. This superiority can be seen in staffing, class size, affluence of students, cognitive ability, and lack of behavioral issues, and facilities, to name a few. As stated by Dr. Bernie Wilkinson in a February 14, 2018 article in Educational Psychology, he says, "We are witnessing a 21st century version of segregation." The difference is, today, segregation is not only based on color, it's based on cognitive ability and a student's social and emotional behavior. Our question to you tonight is, are you willing to acknowledge and accept the reality of these conditions in Grand Rapids Public Schools? And then how, what, and when will you, as a Board of Education and administration, address this situation? Our students deserve a fair, equal, and rewarding educational opportunity. We implore the board to seriously consider what we've presented tonight and address the inequity, the disenfranchisement, and the segregation that appears to be happening with the district's student population. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Jake, or I'm sorry, Jay McCormack?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Jay McCormack. I had a tirade I was going to go into.
You can have a seat, please.
No, I'm only giving you a minute.
Okay.
I had a tirade I was going to go into, but I'm just going to get to the point. On behalf of myself and allegedly the five, four other families who were, quote, mistakenly taken off the bus, although their children had IEPs, I want to know why it took myself calling down to Detransportation and Franklin Campus for two and a half weeks and receiving no help on either end before my child was placed back on the bus. And when that issue was brought up to Laura Lomore and Larry Johnson, it was wholly dismissed. And then, when it was brought up to Dr. Gorman, he said he would look into it. That was a week ago. I have heard nothing on the matter. So if you guys could please get to the bottom of that, I will be back here next week for an answer.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have superintendent's comments?
No comment.
Dr. Flores, board member comments?
No comment.
Ms. Davis?
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, no comment.
Ms. Shatki? I just want to welcome our student representatives again. I just want to let you know that if you're nervous, that's okay. I get nervous, too. If you make a mistake, it's okay. I make mistakes up here, too. What matters is that you're doing something that you don't know anything about, and that is what helps us grow. And so I'm proud of you, and I'm grateful for you giving your time, and if you ever have any questions, any one of us are here to answer.
Reverend Mathias?
Again, welcome students to representing yourselves and some 17,000 students. It's kind of a heavy duty, when you think about that, but welcome to that, and just really grateful for the public comments and how we can engage as a community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
No comment.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I would like to welcome my two new friends down here. I'm always grateful that I get to sit by the young people here. I would also like to thank or congratulate Kirk Johnson and what he does as far as figuring out where is the ninth-grade volleyball, and where is the swim team, and where is the football team? And it is, I mean, I just have two grandchildren in two different sports, and it's like, who's on first? And I give him so much credit because it is a tough, tough job, and he does a really good job.
Thank you. Well, young ladies, welcome again. We're really excited to have you, and meeting adjourned.